All right, so I'll call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the Constitution, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. It will take off. So the first one is department update from MURSD to install two EV chargers at Memorial. Mr. Byer, how are you?
I'm well. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
I was shaking as I thought of him.
That was Mr. Flaherty. I'm sorry.
I can tell just his aura in the room. You can always tell.
Anything, Jay.
Anything for you, Paul. So do you need me to explain what we want to do here?
Sure, if you want to give a brief overview.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty simple. We are contracting with a company to put EV charging stations at all four schools. Two stations at each, two dual chargers at each school. The one at Memorial, we need, we're coming to you because at Memorial, our lease says that we can't make changes to the property without your permission. So that's what we're asking for. I think I sent to Joe a schematic of where they're going to get laid out. Memorial is probably the most difficult of our four locations, just because we're not on the street. We're up at the top of the hill. And the power is underground, so we've got to put it near a transformer, so that's why they go in the back by the fields. These are third-party owned, so we're not putting any money out for them. We do get 30% of the profit, but that's really not the incentive. It's mostly about providing a convenience with EV charging for our employees and anybody else that happens to be back in the park, you know, at night or during the day, whenever.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I move that the select board vote to approve the installation of two EV chargers at the Memorial School.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming.
Paul, I get to sign off now. You get to stay.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. You've left him speechless. Congratulations.
I don't know what he should probably better about.
So next is authorization of abatement consent at Heritage Park for spotted lantern fly.
So in the board's packet, you have material that came from Mass Department of Cultural Resources relating to a infestation of spotted lantern fly, something that people may have seen on the news. Various towns are also dealing with infestations. What this will allow for is for M DAR to treat and abate. This is considered a public nuisance. While the specific condition that the lantern fly goes after may not be present, it will go after apple trees, maple trees, and other agricultural trees that within New England are very valuable. So looking for the board's authorization to sign necessarily a work to allow for M DAR to treat Heritage Park. And I wrote in a way that if we do get anything else for any other town-owned land, that then I'd have authorization to then sign to let them treat on those properties as well.
Any questions, Brett?
Is, do, does the state pay for this, or how does it get?
Yes, it is. It is state-funded.
Yeah, okay. That's my only question.
Morning. Any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board authorize the town manager to execute the abatement consent document prepared by Mass Department of Cultural Resources and any other related documents to treat Heritage Park and other town properties with this spotted lantern fly.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Vote to execute and post the state election warrant. Ms. Wilson, do that, or is she?
I'm gonna ask. And all, so this is pretty straight, straightforward. This is for executing posting the state election warrant. You know, some of you who have signed up to get your ballots in the mail voting, already see what basically is on there. So this is going to allow us to post at our four different locations around.
Okay, any questions? Do I hear a motion?
I move that the board vote to execute and post the November 5th, 2024 state election warrant.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
And then I'll just pass this around. She's having us sign two copies. Nope. Four copies. There we go.
Yes, four places.
You're pressed.
I am. It's a press for everything.
It's only taken four years.
And you only did it because you know, I hand it to you every time.
Every time. Usually when I have it, it's when you gave me at the last meeting.
Exactly. Town manager report, please.
Okay, so, and each of you has a copy of this. So continuation of just many updates between our supply program. Residents are going to start to see their October bill. They're going to be notified, it should be at the top of the bill, that the supplier is being switched to direct energy. Again, this is the supplier that the town working with Colonial Power, who went up bid. Direct energy was the lowest responder and was selected for supply. This will, on average, save about $12, $15 a month, depending on usage. The supplier and that reduction will first appear on that November bill. So for anyone that maybe missed that, if they see their bill and they see the suppliers being changed, it is the town process. It is what we started three years ago with Colonial Power, and then over the summer, held meetings to, with Colonial to select the supplier. Last month, we held a public informational session at the community center. We do have a link, so if people do want to learn more about this, they can watch the video or contact the town manager's office. The police chief's screening committee had its first meeting last Monday. The committee's going to be meeting over the next month and realistically, a month and a half to review applicants and ultimately select candidates to send to an assessment center and then present for appointment as police chief. Town special, special town meeting warrant, we're going to finalize that tonight. Town meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, November 12th at seven o'clock at Nimmong High School Auditorium. DPW is going to be doing a bunch of paving, the end of this week and beginning of next week. So starting on Mendon Street, between Pleasant Street and Grove Street. They're going to be milling on Thursday, the 17th, and paving on Friday, the 18th. And then the following Monday, they're going to start on Pleasant Street, and this is going to be from Mendon to then Main Street, that section that we've been doing some repairs. They're going to be milling on Monday, the 21st, and paving on Tuesday, the 22nd. This is all weather-dependent. At least right now, it looks like we're in for a little nice stretch, so hopefully we'll be able to get that all taken care of. Town clerk. Early voting starts this Saturday, October 19th, and it's going to continue for two weeks until November 1st. Early voting is in the main hall of Town Hall. The Recreation Department, working with Mendon Recreation, is holding their second annual Mendon versus Upton Halloween decorating, decoration competition. If you would like to be placed on the contest map, i.e., you're going to decorate your house and want to participate, please email recreation@uptonma.gov by Friday, the 18th. Also continuing this, this Halloween festivities. The Upton Fire EMS Association is hosting their annual Halloween parade in Spooky World at the Fire Station on Halloween evening. The Halloween parade will assemble in the parking lot of the Upton Community Center at 5:30. The parade kicks off at 6:00 PM. For some upcoming events, because of the passing of Ted Briggs two weeks ago, we rescheduled the coffee with town manager with Upton assessor Valerie Leonardo to this Friday, the 18th. We're going to talk about various abatement programs and programs through the assessor's office for veterans and seniors. On that same evening, the Upton Sports Club is holding a senior dinner catered by Olivas. Then on Friday, November 1st, going to have another coffee with town manager, but with Diddy Smith, town clerk, we're going to talk about the election and town, special town meeting coming up on November 12th. So that's it.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have any public input or board members? Seeing anything, we'll move right along. License approval request a one-day wine malt and liquor license, October 20th, for Rushford and Sons Brewery.
I don't see anyone here from Rushford's in your board's packet, and I do apologize, the control sheet isn't in there, but you do have the application where they, they are looking for a one-day liquor license. The event is going to be on October 20th, Red Rock Farm Event. And board has, has that packet within review. We're awaiting final approval from the buyer department.
Do we want to approve it pending their approval?
No, it didn't pay him last year.
Yeah, yes.
Yep, they did it last year.
Yeah.
And I think we gave, I think we analyzed. Yeah. Yeah.
No, unfortunately.
Well, I know. We used to do that all day before you joined, and it was so easy. We used to actually have to, yeah, that. Do it. I was like, yeah, agenda, something written down, photocopies, finders, three-ring binders.
Mimograph.
All right. I move that the select board vote to approve a one-day wine and malt liquor license for Rushford and Sons Brewery, subject to meeting town bylaw requirements and town rules and regulations for issuing one-day licenses.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? Presentations. Presentation from the Metro West Regional Transit Authority on Providing Transportation Services in Upton.
Hi, Jim Ne. How are you doing?
Thank you for coming.
And also we have someone in person joining us, right?
Yes, Eva Willens, the administrator.
Thank you. Did you get those names? Okay, could I have your name again slowly?
Eva Willens.
W-I-L-L-I-N-S?
E-N-S.
E-N-S. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. Before we start, because I don't know the setup of the room too well, is there value in me sharing my screen for the presentation or anything like that?
Sure, we can see it.
Yep. Okay, wonderful. The can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Sir.
Wonderful. And you can still hear me, so it's going well. Excellent. So again, my name is Jim Ne. I'm the administrator with the Metro West Regional Transit Authority. We really appreciate you having us here tonight. We're here because the Economic Development Group had invited us in for a meeting to have a conversation about kind of the concept of joining an RTA, how that works, and kind of what the value might be and what the options kind of are out there. Sounded like that was predicated on a study that was done regarding sort of some of the transportation needs in Upton. So we were invited to come here and present to you all, and we're very happy to do that. For those who don't know, the MWRTA is one of 15 RTAs in the state of Massachusetts, and the easy way to think of what an RTA is, is it's all public transit in Massachusetts that isn't the MBTA. So there's 15 of us. There's Worcester to the west, Metro West, where we are. The largest in the state by ridership is PBTA in Springfield, but obviously, the highest ridership in the state is not one of the RTAs, it's the MBTA. But the Metro West Regional Transit Authority is the newest of the RTAs. We've been around for about 18 years. We've grown quite extensively in that time, and we've really provided a lot of great service to the people of Metro West. This map here is a little bit closer into sort of the metro Boston area. You might recognize this map. It's, it comes from the MBTA Communities Law. And I'm sharing it because the map overlaps perfectly with communities that are assessed, what is called local assessment to the MBTA. And the transportation local assessment for these communities goes to the MBTA unless that assessment goes to the local RTA. So if there's an assessment that's going to the T, and that town doesn't really have any service or much service from the T, and that town decides to join an RTA, the money that gets sent to the MBTA can instead be sent to that RTA to then be used specifically for that town on transportation services. And Upton is one of the only remaining towns in the state that actually hasn't joined an RTA and has a local assessment to the MBTA. That local assessment isn't optional. The MBTA, because of the way the law is written, can collect that assessment regardless. So even if, you know, Upton wanted to opt out of that, that local assessment goes to them every year regardless. You probably, most people in the state probably don't know what this is, but I bet everyone in this room does. This is the assessments and charges from the 2025 cherry sheets. So down at the bottom of this, you'll see the transportation authorities, which includes the MBTA and regional transit authorities, and you'll see that this is the page for Upton, and Upton currently pays about $60,000 a year to the T. And again, that's not optional. It goes there. It goes up pretty regularly each year on your assessments and charges by about 2.5% typically, or right around 2% to 2.5%. And as you see on this line item, because you're not part of a transit authority, there isn't any money going to a transit authority. This is an example of another town, similar population, similar size, sort of similar distance, maybe a little bit further out from Boston. But it's a town that would normally be assessed an MBTA assessment, and that money would be sent to the MBTA. But this town decided to join an RTA. And down at the bottom, I've highlighted some of these cells because it's important to know that if the amount of service provided by the RTA is less than the total amount of money that the MBTA uses for that local assessment, then there is no increase to the local assessment. Instead, those dollars are basically diverted from the MBTA to the RTA's local assessment. So in this example, the MBTA would actually get $46,396 if this town was not a part of an RTA. But because it is, and they used about $13,000 worth of service, that $13,000 went to the Regional Transit Authority to do transportation services, and there's all different types. And then the remaining amount went to the MBTA still. Now, there is the possibility for the total to go up and the assessment and the charges to go up. But that's only if the RTA provides so much service that it exceeds what the MBTA assessment is. And some communities, some larger communities are interested in that. They, they want a lot of transportation services. They need a lot of transportation services. Many do not. Many are under. This is an example of one that's under. So there's no additional charges. It's just basically taking those dollars and using it for localized transportation service. Now, a really key question to answer when you're thinking about whether or not joining an RTA makes any sense, and maybe the MWRTA in particular, is what type of transportation options, public transportation options, does the MWRTA provide? And I have Eva Willens here, who I think can talk to this topic in a bit of detail.
And the microphones here, it's bi-directional, so you, okay, the recording will be easier. Thank you.
So I just want to talk a little bit about different options that we do offer. We currently have approximately 15 fixed routes, which is the routes that go on a static schedule every day, every, you know, hour. It's the same, right? It's just like in Boston, you pay a fare and you get on where the bus goes. So those fixed routes, there's about 15 of them currently. Is that possible? Yes. So those are some of them there. And then we also have some commuter shuttles as well. So they do run on a static schedule. Some are hour headways, which means it comes back within an hour from where you started. But we also have expanded, and some are 30-minute headway, so that's really great. And some, the reason we get 30-minute headways is some routes that have more capacity now have two weeks, two buses. And then the next slide, just some of the towns, the communities that we have fixed route in. Wellesley, there's a Green Line connector that goes from Framingham all the way to the Woodland Tea Station. Marlborough has several fixed routes. Hudson has a fixed route, Hawkington, Ashland, Milford, just on the outskirts of Oakdale and Hollis and other towns as well. MWRTAD para-transit. So this map, this map shows actual, real-time where our vehicles are for our door-to-door service ADA. These, this ADA service, it's an application-based service, federal requirement, that if you provide public transportation, you have to provide complimentary para-transit, which means it has to, that door-to-door service has to provide service during the same days and hours of operation as your fixed route does, so that people can, that have a disability can go wherever those folks, you know, fixed route can go. So ADA, like I said, same day, same hours of fixed route service. The next slide is just some information on, you know, if you're using the para-transit service, you know, the phone call for our call center, where you, you call to book your trips, the times that you can call, and the time of first pickup and last drop-off. And again, that is based on our hours of fixed route. Dial-a-ride. Dial-a-ride, it's really exciting. Dial-a-ride is above and what we call above and beyond ADA. It's the same type of service as ADA, similar. There's a couple of different things, and I was reading about the COA in Upton, they provide some service. And theirs is a two, two-day advance booking, which is what our dial-a-ride is. So essentially, what the Upton Senior Center does is dial-a-ride service. There are communities who do not have ADA because they don't have fixed route. So some of those communities opt into a dial-a-ride service. It is very similar. It's door-to-door, and it's for seniors and individuals with a disability. And while it's still an application-based service like ADA, it's not as arduous as applying for ADA. ADA is pretty, you know, it doesn't go by age, so you could be 100 years old, and, and somebody evaluating your situation, say, hmm, that person could still, is still mobile, can still walk to a fixed route and get on a fixed route type thing. This is ADA's only disability-based, where dial-a-ride service is if you're 65 and older, you automatically qualify. And if you're under 65, there is an application for that, but it's much less strict in being able to qualify. All our vehicles, just like the Senior Center is, you know, ADA accessible, they all have wheelchair lifts. And some of our communities who only have dial-a-ride, they, you know, we do it. We, we provide the vehicles, we provide the drivers, we provide the call center to call and book your trips. Other communities, they may have fixed route in their community, so they may have some ADA service, but they also want to provide their own transportation program. So there are communities that may partner with us and have a vehicle agreement. So some have more than one, and they provide their own service with their own drivers. And they still go through our call center to, for their folks to book trips. But we, at the end of the day, send them, manifest with all the booked trips, and then they provide the service with their own vehicles. Some have operating subsidies, so they provide their own program, but the RTA provides a monthly offering or annual operating subsidy based on their local assessment. It could be, you know, negotiated what that operating subsidy would be. It's done the cost to their driver, insurance, kind of all that. So, so there's many different ways to have dial-a-ride. I've worked, so Jim had mentioned that the RTA, the Metro West RTA is about 18 years old. I, I've been there almost 18 years. So I've seen a lot of COAs. I've been part of all the onboarding of these COAs, and it was really tough at the beginning because they didn't know who we were. You know, they, they had this structure that worked great for their COA. But once they, once one got on, and then it was like a success story, then, you know, other COAs talked to each other. And it really has flourished, and it gives the COAs an opportunity to expand their service. Some towns, there is one I'm thinking about in particular, has a very robust dial-a-ride service that we provide, but also has a vehicle of ours that they provide their own service to. They might do special trips to a museum, you know, out of the area, or something that our dial-a-ride. So that works really well in unison if they want to have their own program, but yet, the bulk of the dial-a-ride trips provided in that town are done by us. I think I talked enough about dial-a-ride. I'll have even more, because it's so exciting. The towns really love it, you know, once, once the residents get used to it, it's really pretty cool. The next slide is just some places where we go on dial-a-ride. So how it works, if we provide the dial-a-ride service in a town, we have right now 16 member communities. So a person who's trip originates in a town that has dial-a-ride can go to all the other communities for whatever reason. Doesn't matter what it's for. If they want to do a medical trip outside of one of our communities, so if they want to go into Boston, or if they want to go into Worcester, there are some parameters on times of when we can do that during the day, Monday through Friday. But, you know, as long as it's for a medical reason, they can book a trip to do that. I'm not sure how much medical outside the Upton COA does, but I know they do some trips. So the next is just, like I said, the Worcester and then the Boston. You can see that there's certain timeframes of when you can arrive and when you have to be picked up. The next slide is just some standard requirements, and a lot of them have the same requirements as your COA on these readings. So we're all on the same page there. Catch Connect. Catch Connect is another service that we offer. It's what I like to call a public transit version of Uber and Lyft. So you don't have to book a day or two in advance. You call when you're ready to go, you know, or call when you're ready to be picked up. It is an option. It is an expensive option. I'll just add that. It's not that we don't recommend you to consider it, but maybe not at this time. Maybe it would be, I don't know, better to start smaller, but yeah. So it's, it's a great service. It's growing. It's a newer service for us, and it is very popular, like in dense areas. It's more for, I know with Uber and Lyft, you could, if you pay them enough, they're going to take you really far. For our service, it's For our service, it's more for short-term trips. And it, we really encourage the connection to other modes of transportation, either to the commuter rail, to the Green Line, things like that. That's, Wellesley has a very successful Catch Connect service. And there's a lot of trips to and from the Woodland Tea Station. The next slide is just with the app, the catch app for Catch Connect. You can go online and book your trips and makes it a lot easier for a lot of people. You can also, if there's a reason, you know, whether you don't have a phone or you have a disability or you're just really anxious about using an app, you can always call our call center and call center will always help you book a trip.
Is Catch Connect restricted to those same communities that you operate in?
So it's, right now, it's in, well, yes, it would be in our service area, but the Catch Connects, like in Framingham, Manetick, Wellesley, it's all within that community because it's a shorter trip. You know, we don't go outside of a community per se if you have, you know, you can go Framingham, Manetick. And, but you can't go into Ashland because Ashland doesn't have Catch Connect. And there's plenty of connections to different modes in those, in those towns. So, yeah. Jim, you want to take the next one about joining the RTA?
Sure thing. So this is a section of Mass General Law 161B, everyone's favorite law regarding RTAs. I'm not going to read this whole section, but the highlighted or the underlined section here, I kind of copied and pasted onto this next page. And the yellow section and the blue section here are kind of step one and step two. If a community decides to join an existing RTA, the process is a little bit different if you're creating a new RTA. But if one already exists and a city or town wants to join, step one is the chief elected officials, the board of selectmen in this case, of a community votes to join the RTA. And the second step is after that vote takes place by the select board, the RTA advisory board votes to approve the municipality joining. And that is a bit of a formality. I don't think anyone's ever been denied entry into RTA. So if a, or if a municipality wants to join one, that pretty much happens. And that's really as complicated as the process is. Now, obviously, the deliberations, the decisions, the planning is much more extensive than that. But from a regulatory perspective, it's, it's pretty simple. So that is the information we have to share with you here today. I am going to stop sharing my screen. And I know both Eva and I are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Do you have any questions? What is near Upton that's fixed?
So, so fixed route, we do have a fixed route that goes through Framingham through Ashland, Pockington. And its terminus is South Street after Price Chopper there. So fixed route, not that you couldn't have one, but fixed route does really well in denser areas, more capacity. So you wouldn't want a big bus running, going through town that, you know, it's not picking up a lot of people. You know, the, the, the density is really what drives fixed route.
So would we start with perhaps Dialer Ride? And then if you saw a pattern emerging that, hey, you know, this is pretty consistent around those times, should we create a fixed route?
So that's one way of doing it. And Catch Connect is big on that too, that sometimes start with a Catch Connect. Although it is expensive again, but there's, that's what we're doing in Framingham and Manetick. And we're watching the, you know, the data and to see if maybe a fixed route would be conducive. Because a fixed route is a lot cheaper to operate than a, you know, door-to-door type service. So, yeah.
Right. Do you have any questions?
No, I think it's great, very timely, given the conversation we're having in a little while about getting a new COA.
Sounds like we're paying for it anyhow. We might as well use it.
I think, yeah, I mean, I think we'll, we can talk about it now. It's right, it's the, the, I think of it almost not unlike ambulance service or things like that, right? Like, there's no downside that I can see to signing up for Dialer Ride and then playing in the MWR TA district to do that, because it's not going to cost us anything above and beyond what we're already paying. It's just the state reallocating money from one transit authority to another transit authority. I doubt we get to a point where we would expend all of that sixty thousand dollars a year. And if we did, it's because people are loving and using the service and that's a good thing. And so I think the question is, in addition to that, do we also want to provide our own sort of local service, enhanced service by getting a COA van and having local people and having it run out of the COA and sort of that program? And I'd love to hear from them about their perspective on that and the local COA as well as, you know, the director and the, exactly. Exactly.
I mean, I kind of see this as a, right, we can decide, but I also see this as maybe a stopgap. And if somebody's falling through the cracks and, you know, needs to go here or there, they can pay for, you know, the two dollars and
Totally.
Call for the ride.
Oh, yeah. No, I, I don't see any downside.
No, I don't either. I don't.
And we'd be happy to talk to the COA and if it comes to that point. I have so many great relationships with the COAs. They're just wonderful and they do such a good job.
Yeah.
It's also one I'd be great to consider because I think this actually came up when we were doing some of our housing plan workshops in outreach. There's basically a question as far as transportation, but also for transportation services for people who aren't seniors. And right now, we pretty much cater to seniors. This, this program, we do have people that are disabled, that are under sixty-five. And this does allow another option that specifically would be, be tailored for, for them. And I think this is part of a layered approach, working with existing resources. COA, I've been working with Tri Valley on, Tri Valley grant services to also do sort of Dialer Ride. But that was something that, what, you were like limited to two trips a month. So there was some restrictions. This is sort of all about bringing different resources to really supplement one another and, and ways that we do have some members of the population who don't have these options.
Yeah. I'm surprised to hear that we don't offer the COA rides for people with handicap access that need rides that are under the age of sixty-five. So that's another separate but related conversation.
And that's the group that probably is falling through the cracks and it just isn't seen.
Yeah.
And are scrambling, you know?
Glad it's been brought to our attention so that we can address it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate the information. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you both.
Have a great night. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Now I have, the next one is presentation by proponents of the venue, a reuse of Holy Angels. Move forward. Be careful when you sit on those chairs. They take off. You could, you know, into the television screen and, you know, et cetera. It, it gets interesting. Thank you for coming tonight.
Stabilized.
Yes, it's usually just the initial.
Yeah, yeah, just the initial landing and we're, we're good to go.
Right. If we could have your names for Sue, for the record?
My name is Matthew Fear, one nineteen High Street here in Upton.
Craig, one most of the Hazel Time Road in Upton.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Thanks to the select board for having us back. Very excited to, to talk about this. We've, we've had a couple of months to, to think and, and work on more planning on how we can make this happen. So just as a little bit of a recap, we can go to this, just the first slide as far as what is venue? What have we, what have we talked about? It's been a couple of, so just a little refresher. Venue is our plan to take the Holy Angels Church and turn it into a sort of a cultural center here in Upton that provides things like performance spaces, workspaces, museum space for the Historical Commission. Just a destination in general that would be in the center of downtown Upton. And we feel that this, this space is just, it's a beautiful building and keeping it as it is and turning it into something that could bring the community together is, is really something that, that we're passionate about. So just going to the next slide, again, just a little recap, this is kind of what the, here, perfect. This is the last slide that we currently have up. It's just kind of gives a overview of what it is and what we would plan to do. And there's a lot of information on that. I won't go, I won't go through it because we've gone through it before. So just the, the different spaces, the upstairs, downstairs and the possibility of working the backyard into that as well. Going on to the next slide, this would be just kind of a representation of, of kind of what a day should look like or, or an event calendar could look like for the space with meetups, workshops, explorations and performances and things like that. So now that we've kind of recapped of what it was, now we get to the real question is how, how is it possible to make this happen? How can we do it? It's a massive project. There's no, there's no denying that. It's, it's, it's a, a big building that's been out of use for a while. So there's a lot of stuff to it. But we've broken it down into sort of five phases that would lead to this building being up and, up and running. The first phase, and we'll just go on to the next, the next slide here is the, the building fund and the planning of it. This is where, and I don't have a lot of exact numbers here. This is all, these are all, this, this is all stuff that we're, we're coming up with as we go. And we will get numbers as more information becomes available to us. But the general idea is to develop a PPP, a public-private partnership between the town of Upton and a five oh one C three that we will be forming, that we've started forming, called the Upton Arts and Cultural Collaborative. Now, this, this nonprofit, the whole point of it is to work with the Holy Angels Building. So, you know, we still have to put in the, the state paperwork and pay the money and everything to get registered with the state and, and the town for nonprofit status. But that is a, that's a boilerplate process. It doesn't take long for that to happen. So it would be a, a collaboration between the town of Upton and this five oh one C three that we would be starting. The town would supply a certain percentage of the funds to get the building up to code. And then the, the UACC would obtain matching grants, private donations, corporate sponsors and to cover the remaining costs. There are, there are a ton of grants through the Mass Cultural Council that are matching grants. So we have X amount of money, we can get the same amount to, to, to put towards the bill. One of the first things we would need to do is hire an architect to go in there and, and take a look at the place. We, we have been in, Craig and I have been in contact with the CPC here in Upton to talk about kind of what that entails. And it's, it's a pretty straightforward process as far as, but I believe it has to be the town that goes to the CPC.
Yes, and we've, I've been, I reached out to Mike Panko when he redirected us to the CPA, the Massachusetts CPA. We've been speaking with a man named Stuart Sangor. And he's having a presentation on November seventh about applying for funding. So we would like to, we're, we're going to attend the presentation, see how you actually go about getting, getting the funding. And then we'd like to hire an architect to kind of do an evaluation of, a cost evaluation of what needs to be done and how much the, the, the cost will be. And then we can kind of formulate our, our strategic plan going forward about how much funds we need. And then we can figure out where we get them. And there's a lot of opportunities to this, through the CPC and Upton, the Mass Preservation, Cultural Council, there's a facilities grant that provides up to two hundred and fifty thousand. And then there's Massachusetts Preservation, which can do a matching grant of two fifty. So we could get up to potentially five hundred thousand. So that would be a long ways towards developing our goal. But.
Yeah, no, no, that's a, that's a definitely something that we're, we're working towards. And then on to the next slide, as I said, we're, we're putting this, we're putting this nonprofit together. And the mission of the nonprofit would be twofold. It would be to revitalize the building at Holy Angels, but also to, as we have here, to cultivate a welcoming and vibrant environment that encourages social gatherings and connections among individuals of all ages. We would strive to create diverse opportunities for the community to engage with and experience the richness of arts and culture, promoting creativity, collaboration and lifelong learning. Through inclusive programming and events, we aim to inspire a deeper appreciation for the arts while building a strong interconnected community that values cultural expression and shared experiences. Then let's see. And then the formation of the structure of the, the UACC would be this. We would have a, four different sort of named roles on the, on the board of directors and three to four active sitting members. And I mean, Craig and I are the two right now. But we, during the Heritage Day, we had a little table set at the Historical Commission. And we got about seventy names of people that were interested in learning more about this project. So the idea is to reach out to them and see what they have to offer. See if they would like to become more of an active member of this kind of project to join up on our board of directors when we get that up and running. So all that in planning is, is the phase one. And then going into phase two would be the renovation restoration. And we do that in two phases, obviously. Like, I, I feel like that would be the easiest way to do it. We work on the upstairs, get the upstairs figured out and then start doing things in the upstairs while we work on the downstairs. The, and then I kind of, what I did is I separated it into things that the town would be responsible for versus things that the nonprofit would bring to the table. The, the town, we would ask that they would, you know, help us hire that architect for the strategic plan. And, you know, there's a lot of big ticket items that need to be done. I looked at the, there was a structural evaluation done in twenty nineteen, which was a while ago, which seems weird to say, but was. And they did say the building is overall structurally sound, but then they went on to say, but there's all this stuff. And there is a lot of stuff as far as asbestos, lead paint, the first floor would need to be reinforced. And just accessibility in general would need to be considered. But this is where the, the UACC would come in to help raise the money for that to happen through the Mass Cultural Grants. And as a nonprofit, we can go to other town agencies to request funds as well. So we would be, you know, talking with the Historical Commission, the Community Preservation Council, also is, you know, private donations and corporate sponsorships. At any point, if anybody has like a question or a comment, please feel free to interrupt me. I'm, I'm okay with that. And then moving to phase three, that would be the launch. And then, once all this work has been done, we, we asked ourselves, how will venue be run? And the venue itself would be run through the nonprofit. The nonprofit board would hire a managing director and an artistic director for the building. And that would be paid for through grants collected by the UACC. And the same with any sort of part-time employees or volunteers, things like that, that would all be gathered by the UACC. The town would not have any responsibility in staffing the place once it's up and, once it's up and running. As far as the next, the next of the day-to-day operations, the town would maintain ownership of the building. It would be sort of a landlord tenant role. I, I don't know if landlord is the proper word to use, but in, in my, in my brain, that's the closest allegory to what it would be.
We did, and then it was, we, the Cultural Council got sent to their dollar lease.
Big what? I'm sorry.
Dollar lease that covered the landlord.
A dollar lease.
A dollar lease.
That was, yeah, that's, that's, we've connected with some other communities in in this area that have done things similar to this. We talked, when we first started talking about this, we we brought up 19 Carter a lot in Berlin, Mass. And there, it's a beautiful location. I don't know if you've ever, if you've ever been there, if you've seen it, if you ever go up to Berlin, I definitely suggest checking it out. And they actually hosted a kind of a consortium of different organizations that have done this. And there were a lot of that dollar piece kind of things where they would rent that to the the Cultural Council of the town. And that was the way they saved a lot of really cool buildings and really like the Stone Church, I believe, in
West Boils.
Or could be. There was also a giant asylum campus that they turned into like an arts campus and I believe the names of these towns are
Yeah, I forgot the name of the town.
It might be.
So I I went to a venue there recently.
Yeah, it's it's from what I've seen of their presentation, when each of these groups would get up and and talk like these buildings are beautiful.
I think even Apple Tree Arts and Grafton would have a similar structure.
So as as going back to the day-to-day operations, we would ask that that the town help cover maintaining the building and the property and help us with utilities and things like that, while the UACC would manage the building and and provide the sort of programming and things that would work towards that revitalization of the of the downtown Upton area, which, you know, we we all would like to see happen.
And just to clarify, UACC stands for Upton Arts and Cultural Collaborative?
Yes.
And that will be the name of the 501(c)(3).
And then phase five is, of course, many, many years down the road. But as as phase five go, it's it's a pretty big one. There's always that potential for us to then, once the building is up and running and we've shown how successful it can be, we we, you know, want to revisit the idea of possibly the the nonprofit purchasing the building from the town. But that again is is many, many years down the road. Once, you know, and it would be something that we would check in with and make that make that decision together between the 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 select board and the board of directors of the of the nonprofit. If that's even a thing that we they would want to do, or if it's something that, you know, the the collaboration is something that everybody enjoys, so we just keep doing it. You know, that's that's something that everybody's up for. As far as next steps, as I said, we're still very much in the exploratory phase of this, getting numbers, getting sort of interest peaked over this. The next step would obviously be to actually create the 501(c)(3) and make it official. I mean, technically it's been created, but to make it official. I I do have, I I've spoken to a few members of the community that are interested in being part of like the board of directors on on a board. And it's, you know, people that I've met over my time here in Upton and people seem very excited about it. Answering remaining questions that that you all would have, whether I have those answers today is is I don't know if I would have those answers today, but it's something I would write down and we would definitely look into and work on getting those answers together. Engage in the community, which we've kind of already started doing a little bit with this. But really trying to to drum up support. And I don't believe it will be that hard. It feels like the most of the people that I've I've talked to and just vaguely chatted with about this, the first thing that comes out of their mouth is oh, that sounds really, really neat. That sounds like something that would be great. So now we take those needs and grates and turn them into, well, okay, what can you do to help? So doing things like that. And then as Greg or as Craig mentioned, we'd be going to this event in in Grafton to learn more about like what is, what we can do with this, the local CPA program. And then the big, the biggest thing right now is to hire that architect so we can get a list of itemized things. So that's what I have and that's kind of what we're bringing to you today. And where we go from here, I don't 100% know. But I'm open to ideas and I'm open to collaboration with you all.
According to your question. Well, I think they have a lot to do to pull everything together and me personally, before I could vote on anything, I'd have to know the cost and what it's going to cost the town.
Yeah.
And what the private sector is going to give towards the renovation of the building. I thought they had in that study, as they did, an estimate on what just to do the structural stuff. Didn't include like the plumbing and electrical and stuff like that.
And so it's that's six years old and it's prior to the pandemic. And that was, I think, I don't know. Was written on.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why we kind of wanted to go to this event in Grafton and see if we could get CPA funding to hire an architect and get a fresh evaluation of the building and and a real a real kind of drawn up summary of what it would, what what each thing would be that in the cost basis. And this is this is from 19 Carter. We've been going to workshops at 19 Carter to kind of get ideas about how to go about doing this. But this is 19 Carter's kind of breakdown of of their costs. It's it's on page 45 and and 46. That's kind of that's for 19 Carter to be for us, but we want to get that product from the architect essentially. So if we can get funding for the architect, that would be the end product. So we'd know how much, what we need to do and how much that
The point is, it's not that those are the numbers, right? It's just that
It's a sample.
It's a sample.
It's an example.
They would want Forget the numbers. Don't let that distract you.
I don't know if if, you know, I never know if people follow what we're doing or not, but very recently, a group came before us, combined with the two schools. The Need for Fields is parish. And they got together, they hired an engineer, they had a lot of volunteers. A lot of their their ideas and thoughts were were donations from the community, from people involved, people invested. And they came to us with a final product that was quite impressive. You know, they want to just by simply toting the football field at Nipmaw, they can now create a track around it because there's a need for a track. But they did all of that with people in the community. We have a very vast and rich diverse culture in this community. And people said, somebody said, I can donate my time and I'll, I'll map this out for you. They had somebody map the wetlands and different things and to prove that just by turning it. And when they came to us, they gave us a full presentation saying, look, this is what we're going to be asking for. This is it. This is how we're going to raise money, right down to the fact that we're losing gate fees because we don't host football games. You know, those of us who are old enough to remember that you just went to a football game, didn't realize that they're moneymakers. You know, because there are gate fees plus the concession stands and they really did their homework. Reach out to them. See what their thoughts and their processes were because
I knew Community Project.
Didn't enough to community.
They really did a wonderful, it's been years in the making, but they did a wonderful presentation. Because they presented us with, this is how we expect to get this done. This is what we need, the numbers. And now the next step is for them to garner support because of course we'll have to go to vote between the towns. But they had some great ideas and I'd like to see something more of a finished product like that from this. You know, it's awful hard to go. We have so many needs coming up, you know, our, the roofs on the schools. There's a lot of big ticket items coming forward and it's hard to ask for money for something that it's a fabulous idea. I mean, as I said, I was just in Mansfield. It's spooky going into the old. You know, it is the old mental hospital or I don't know if that's the proper term. So we're a kid. So anyhow, but it, you know, I know this is popping up around, but it it's also, you know, it's, I think it's a long-term goal, but I think it's an achievable goal in town, but I'd like to see something more concrete. And I think the November 7th will probably help you. And I think also if you reach out to these fields committee, because some of these skills may overlap. Some of the architectural skills, some of the engineering skills, some of the structural skills, some of the pricing, you know. Exactly. I mean, and there's is a public, private partnership that they're doing something very similar to what you're doing. You know, they came together and said this is what we need to do.
Yes.
Go ahead. Brett's a little more familiar with them, but go ahead.
Nope. I was waiting.
No, no, I'm done. I'll just keep babbling.
I was just going to say, between reaching out to them and reaching out to the the names on the list that we have so far. You know, putting it out there and seeing what talents we can, we can gather. That's, that's kind of our, that's was kind of my next step.
And I I think too, you know, quite frankly, I'm sure they fell in a bunch of potholes and some pitfalls and perhaps they can prevent you from doing the same. You know, perhaps they can say, look, we started doing this. It didn't really work and we we spun, but we lost six months because we did this. So please don't make the same mistake we did.
I was, I was also thinking of this as kind of like
Make a point when there's a break in the conversation.
Yeah, I was just thinking that would be kind of like a project between us and the select board and it'd be an ongoing thing. So maybe we could schedule a meeting out three months to update you on our prod, on our process and and our progress and see how far we're going. Just to give you guys an update and and kind of maybe get guidance from you and what you'd like to see and things like that, just so it's like a collaborative kind of project between the 501(c)(3) and the select boards, kind of shepherded in the in the right direction.
I would say we're always available, you know.
Thank you. So definitely appreciate all the time, effort and energy. I think it's, I agree, Laura, right? It's a fabulous idea. There's a lot of work to be done and you're, we're to sort of, we're fairly in the journey and that's great, but I agree. I think it's a great idea. I think that I I put it in the context of, right, like it's all, this all comes back to the broader vision for revitalizing downtown that the community went through. Right? So this is one piece of a complex puzzle of revitalizing the downtown. We had ideas around how that parcel could be redeveloped. Those ideas didn't work, so we put two RFPs out there to redevelop that whole block. It didn't come to fruition. So we said, hey, you know what? What other ideas are out there? So we did the EOI. We've got different sort of said, hey, who's got ideas out there? And this is what's risen to the surface as the opportunity. So I'd just like to keep it in that context to recognize that this is one part of revitalizing the whole sort of downtown environment, right? We all agree. Having an empty church that's not used doesn't serve the town or the community or the taxpayers in any way, shape or form. So it's great to paint it. I'm glad that we were able to do that, but I think it would be a lot nicer if we could, to your point, utilize it and do something that brought benefit to the community. And I think there would be a lot of community support for that. I also agree, there are lots of priorities and there's lots of things to spend the next dollar on. And so advancing this as we advance lots of ideas is a valuable exercise. And when there's a decision to be made, we'll make a decision, right? I think more into your point, right? We don't have enough information to make any vote or recommendation or decision or anything. But I do think maybe would it be helpful to just sort of get a sense of, like, it sounds like you support at least advancing the idea. It's not like, yeah, definitely don't do it, right? Like I think that you should consider you, that you have the board's support and encouragement to continue the process. We want to help you get whatever information you need. I think it's a great idea. It sounds like you think it's a fabulous idea. You know, they did something similar in Hopton that seems to work out. There's a modeling Grafton that we have. So there's some examples where this can work and, you know, I think there's a lot of potential here. So you know, that's, so that's where we are. So I
I heard you to, you know, those stuff, the fields people. Great group. The 70 people, you never know what hidden talents around the corner.
Yeah, that's for sure.
And if people are willing to donate some time and effort. That's what matters.
And even if you like, like I picture, and I think, you know, like that website where you, I know you just showed the slides, but like I've actually sort of explored the websites, like having that artifact, if you send those 70 people a link to that artifact, there's no way that you wouldn't get a bunch of excitement and people that were interested in saying, hey, you know what? This is pretty cool. How can I help? What more can I do? If you said, hey, here are some opportunities to help out. This is where we are. This is what we're doing. We're going to have a meeting whenever, like I I know people in this town would be excited about getting involved. There's so much energy and creativity and talent.
Exactly. And like I said, you may have crossover from the group, you may not. But I do think they can say, hey, this is what we tried, you know, for a couple of years. Move you along faster than if you're just trying to do it, you know, a limited number of people and resources.
That's a huge, that's a huge piece of information. Thank you so much for for offering that. I
Like I said, their final product is very impressive.
Good.
I don't know if I want to tell you that it was like a 10-year journey, but that's okay. But but that, that's But you know, I'm a firm believer in not recreating the wheel. If someone has gone before you, find out what worked, what didn't. Take what you need from it and keep moving forward.
Yeah.
More information.
Lynda, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I think my I think that in order to qualify for the Cultural Council Grant, that must be down, become a cultural district. Yes, from Hopton and from everything I've read. So I think that should be something on your checklist. That's what equals the facilities grants, I believe, that I So that's how
We said the whole town or just like we create a cultural district in the town?
You create a district in the town.
Gotcha.
You need, they have a district. They do a lot of that district.
Okay.
Schools funding.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they have
Like the National Heritage Corridor is a way that they, Blackstone Valley got, right? Stuff for the Blackstone Valley.
With the facilities grant, I believe, you know, like you're in the corridor, then you fly to the facilities grant. But that's all I think I sent, maybe for some information, so.
Is that something that we have to vote on as a town to make a cultural district?
You'd have to check with the town manager, but there is direction on the Mass Cultural Council.
Yeah, but I think it's a good point, just right, like anytime you can get information about adding stuff to the list in the process, it's great.
Lot of grants.
Yeah, and this, this
Free money is free money. It's like when you go to college, you find it all.
And I know, I know when we talked in August, right, we had a lot of open questions and I do appreciate, like, I know we sort of I think we sent out sort of like, here's the agenda. And I'm, I think that what you covered was fantastic. It answered a lot of the open questions that I had. I know we don't have all the answers. I know we don't have numbers. But like even just the structural and the fact that there's the renovation upfront that the town's going to be more involved in. But then, once the renovation is done, the town is less involved. And so as we start to think about talking to our constituents and other people in town, it's like, hey, okay, this is, this is what it would be. There would be some part of this that would require funding to get it back up and running. But once it's running, it's a little more hands-off for the town. So that's just, just having that clarity helped me a lot as I think about talking to other people about it and sort of hoping it around a little. So.
Like I said, we're always available, you know, reach out to Joe, reach out to Sue, ask to be placed on the agenda. We're a little busy. We don't chase people. We let you come to us.
Makes sense.
Yes, yes. All right. Thank you. We appreciate everything. Thanks for coming tonight.
Have a good night.
Have a nice night. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for all the time.
So moving on to discussion 7A, discussion on potential use of trust funds for COA Minivan and Route 140 Main Street Design.
So put this on the agenda because we had a very interesting discussion when Finance Committee joined us at our last meeting and questions were asked about when it's banned, why don't we consider using the Restine B Welfare Funds? That also then had a similar question as far as using Restine D Beautification Funds or the design work to really enhance and beautify Route 140 as part of that tip. So place this on the, on the agenda and provide it excerpts for the board with language from both the Elder Restine well as well as the William Holden Trust. And this has come up in some other discussions as well as far as what is allowed. So this has some of that information really to show the person, it is rather broad for some of these purposes. And then also included the available balances for three of these trust And then also included the uh, available balances for three of these uh, trust fund. Restine B welfare, uh, de beautification, and then uh, William. And really, it's it's, you know, these two gentlemen had the the idea as far as a welfare and. Like, uh, at least turn it over to them to provide any comment.
Mr. Flaherty is putting you on the hot seat, just in case you didn't see the vote.
I had said that. I trust my statement.
You did so.
You most certainly do.
Basically, as a member of the trust commission, uh, at this time, we have two point four million dollars in the welfare trust of which seven hundred and eighty-three thousand approximately today is expended. So the dilemma we have with that trust is that it's it's not a bad dilemma. It's just that because of the structure of the trust, the revenues are growing faster than the expenditures. So it keeps massing more and more money. And I would project by the end of this year, we'd probably be close to a million dollars expended. So the question lies, do we go to the taxpayers and say, and again, you mentioned it very well, there are critical needs that are going to come before the town or I before the town. So does it not make sense to appropriate from this trust? Because the language and having researched in the past, the language says the needy of up. That term is this big. And when you have elderly people that have medical needs, that qualifies easily underneath. Uh, and uh, again, the other advantage is if the state and the presently the uh, the grant for the van. Again, the state is, it's a dilemma. If the town can go out and buy the one they want and it's preferable to get beside tailgate versus the rear tailgate, it would have three wheelchair access. And again, it would alleviate tremendous stress on a bus that's gonna cost two hundred thousand replace if we burn it out. So I, it's just an idea I forward. It's not my decision, but I think it's a consideration and go forward.
So as part of this, each of you also has a copy of an email from Tanya. She attended uh, today, the Mastod uh, pre-application training and provided some highlights. Um, and I think one of the things is one, not only is the price increasing, but Mastod actually keeps a lien on the vehicle. Uh, second thing, we have annual reporting that we need to do, audits get done. And really, I think the main issue is the time. You're looking at war notifications, uh, February, March twenty twenty-five, delivery fall of twenty twenty-five. So talking to Bob, thinking about, um, you know, also dealing with, you know, transportation struggles with my own um, parent. Uh, the, and also observing some of the needs for people when we'd be at COA meetings. Um, yeah, people have doctor's appointments that are canceled or rescheduled last minute. Um, you know, and these are people that may need dialysis three times a week or really urgent medical appointments, I think. You know, the the specific need for and seniors and those especially, you know, they're just looking for a ride. I mean, they're not looking for anything else. And I think there's, there's some, uh, there's a good nexus here between the use of those funds and for this. And as as uh, was stated two weeks ago, um, uh, we have these funds, they're they're available. If we need to get another vehicle uh, for another apartment, we can use these funds. So this this gives us a little bit more flexibility. And also on the delivery, there's, there's vehicles that are in stock. That if we wanted to be able to acquire them on a faster timetable, we're not dealing with a year just to acquire our vehicle.
And quite frankly, I think if we have a smaller vehicle, we'll have more people willing to drive it. There's not a lot of people. Usually it's somebody retired and our van is large. And uh, a lot of people don't, aren't comfortable if you've never driven anything that much.
Yeah, we might be able to get.
I would thank more volunteers for the smaller one.
Just to add a little on that, I think we're very fortunate. Uh, the people that do drive are very dedicated. And they have dilemma because many seniors don't understand the context. And sometimes transportation to a supermarket has to be canceled because a citizen has a priority need. At say UMass or in Northridge or something. So this will be a lot of that stress on them and the staff.
So what, Joe, when you say on this program here, the state keeps a lien on vehicles, what does that mean?
It basically means that they're on the town. If we wanted to upgrade, get rid of it, we can't until it is at end of life. After five years, we wanna trade it in.
See, don't need any partners on the vehicle.
Just clarify, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we wouldn't be able to modify it without their consent. It's, they have control. It's like owning a vehicle that you carry interest through a bank payment and the bank really owns it till you pay it off.
I mean, from, from my perspective, and I think I said it last week when you said it, although it seemed like it made you surprised you. Um, I think that this, any opportunity for us to put this money to use in a way that honors what Ella Restine wanted in the spirit of what she wanted, I think is great. So I I don't need to go on you, Oliver, we go on ad nauseam about. No, I know.
You know.
Really?
We.
I don't know.
Uh, you know.
That one puts you over the edge.
Actually, we said never argue with the pool becomes best as by the old trees. So I would be.
That's a good one.
So so I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's a great idea. I think we have, like, if I was gonna create a hierarchy of needs of ways we want to spend this money, right? Number one is helping individuals that need individual help the way that we use it. That has led to us having nearly eight hundred thousand dollars of money that's just sitting there not being used. So my next item is, yeah, you know what, if we can be creative and find ways to use the money, we're not talking about eight hundred thousand dollars. We're talking about a hundred thousand dollars or whatever the number is. And great, I think it's fantastic. And I'm very glad that the idea's been proposed and I fully support it.
You or Joe, perhaps, given the kind of an interest that you're receiving of this town money, how long before you're gonna recoup that?
Within a year and a month.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, and I will.
Trust on average last year.
Yeah.
Fourteen percent.
Yeah.
And uh, yeah, so the reality is fourteen to a hundred forty thousand on the.
We, we, we cannot, I've literally, we did, well, I won't, I'm not gonna touch it so hard, but it, it, it's. The money setting up small bit of money for this purpose does not put the trust at risk. There's no risk to people suddenly not having money available that needed. So that number one priority for what we'd want to use these funds for is not in any way jeopardized or put at risk by using the money to do this project. It's just not.
As, as a related aside, as a member of the Blumber Girls, we get quite a few requests for people that need their vehicle to get to the supermarket that live in Millhouse or Coach Road. They don't have tires. Something went, you know, we get, we five hundred dollars here, five hundred dollars there. And as the price of new cars have skyrocketed.
Yeah.
You know, these people who are on a fixed income can, you know, they can't afford to replace what they have. They are putting Band-Aids on it. And we have had, you know, and quite frankly, the Blumber Girls also, when somebody's back is against the wall. Yeah. Some of the Blumber Girls will do it. They will give a ride. Um, so I think it's something in the spirit of the trust fund. And I think it's something that's only gonna be used more and more. In addition to if we join the RTA.
Yeah, I agree.
Because it's just harder and harder to get around.
Yeah. And I, and I don't, I don't see, I mean, I think there's probably some conversation that could be had that said, hey, if we're gonna join the transit authority. You know, you may have people that said, well, if we're gonna join the transit authority, then we're basically gonna be addressing the need by giving people that option. So why do we also need the van? My view is like I said, and I'll just sort of say it again, right? Like, this is like having local ambulance and firefighters and paramedics. Like, I'd rather have someone from town, in our town. The same way, I don't want to share the, share the van with the state. I appreciate that the regional transit authority provides a great service and they're great, but they're not up. And they're not our people, they're not our drivers, they're not our vans, and and sure, they're wonderful. But if local controlled, this asset would be fantastic.
And I'd have to say, you know, when I've heard about the M, the ride in downtown Boston and MBTA, it is an unmitigated disaster. It strands handicap people constantly. It might be the WRTA may be very, very different. The MBTA, the ride is an horror show.
Really?
Yes, you can watch Paul Pini. Just Google it.
All the more reason.
I did work um, in two of the towns that are serviced by uh, Metro West Regional Transit. And being local, it is more flexible and it's. Uh, but again, it's it's a layered approach.
It's layered, that's.
And I think that's the best.
Yeah.
I think the more, more options we can give our community.
Exactly.
It's to everyone's benefit.
Yep, yep.
Well, you think, Ed, since we've all been babbling, we've been quiet.
Yes, you guys cracked this. We could have just said yes.
So.
Am I up? I. Time to run. All right, do I hear a motion? Or do you want to say?
Okay, because tied to this, there was general discussion as far as, um, well, you know, uh, the design work for um, uh, enhancing, you know, landscaping light isn't really uh, making the center more beautiful with the tip ups coming in. That was identified as something else that like, hey, we'd be able to be and and um, get going on that faster if we used uh, the trust funds. Also, under the uh, the uh, William Knowlton, um, that purpose is supposed to be for public purpose. So while we're having this discussion and because we're finalizing our um, uh, town meeting warrant, if there were any articles that you wanted to pull to them consider, like the the fifteen hundred dollars for the um, compost. That's clearly a public, that we'd be doing raised and appropriated. It's, it's like a minor amount, but then it's limited to this fiscal year. And to say like, we're gonna then say have it as a separate article that then, you know, we're devoting free cash. We haven't really talked about some of these other minor requests of mosquito, I mean, that's we talked about it, we talked about using trust funds, but we didn't nail that down. Wants to throw up, if we're gonna be finalizing the warrant, are there any other articles we'd want to discuss? And we don't have to do that tonight. We could add a follow-up meeting, we could discuss, because we can always vote to pass over an article. But if you did want to pull, like for the van, if you wanted to just pull that, that's for doing that tonight. Or we just leave everything on and then we can just motion to pass over that town, that town meeting. So that's the one thing, I wrote the motions as far as if the board want to consider using um, trust funds for those purposes.
So my only, my only hesitation with that, I feel like that's different in the following way. The trust fund, the welfare trust fund, Restine B, right? Like, we struggle to spend that money. It's got eight hundred thousand dollars in it. We've been working hard to try to find way after way after way to spend it. And I'm very confident that our primary intent for that is not in any way, shape or form in jeopardy. The, the beautification fund has less than a hundred thousand dollars in it. People spend it every year. They use a fair bit of it every year. And this would represent a significant chunk of the available expendable balance in that trust. So I feel like that the math is a little different with that one. Conceptually, I know we just got that million and a half dollars and whatever. So, but I sort of want to consider that in a broader context, I think. To me, that feels a little bit different. So I'm very comfortable with the van. I feel like I would need to personally and as an individual, think a little bit more about the, the using beautification funds for funding the master plan for Upton Center. But that's just.
All right, so um, do we want to make a motion tonight?
For the first.
To acquire the van? And then skip the second one?
Yep. I move that the board vote authorize the use of Restine B welfare trust funds to acquire handicap accessible minivan for use by the Elder and Social Services Department to support the transportation of residents who are in need.
I'll second. All in favor? Well, thank you. Great idea.
It's a great idea.
Execution of DPW.
Great idea.
Even if Paul was carrying the water, great idea. Um, execution of DPW collective bargaining unit contracts.
Okay, so the board have previously sent the full contract. Um, basically what the difference between that and what the board had signed um, in the memorandum of agreement is the memorandum of agreement identified all things that changed. And then the contract is just all the other language, much of which never even change.
Okay.
So, so that's basically it. There is under Article twenty-five of the contract. Uh, basically, the non-monetary changes do get implemented uh, on execution. But the monetary part of it is contingent on approval from town meeting. So.
I moved that the select board vote to execute collective bargaining agreement, CBA with the Department of Public Works, supervises Kings to Union Mobile one seventy and Department of Public Works, hourly employees as presented.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
I.
unanimous.
So and then we also have uh, four total, two for each. So if you can just sign that.
Mark, you got one. Um, so we'll move on to seven C, request for purchase of one hundred flags for town property. Mr. Flaherty.
Hi, um, I'm gonna be candid about this, but there were a group of us, uh, last Veterans Day. They drove through surrounding towns and saw flags present on the common and nothing didn't happen. So I'll cite the gentleman, gentleman in partnership with me on this side here, Judge McDonald and Kenny Libby. And we got to talking, we said, well, let's initiate it ourselves. Um, and make it a volunteerism by veterans of the community. So like to just show you. I went online and I thought, this is, believe it or not, this delivered, it's twenty-two dollars delivered complete. Now, this includes a stake in the ground, which this is not precessed down. This would actually come up here. So the stake would go on the foot. And I measured the town common and based upon the common, we reallocate the numbers to seventy-five flags. That would allow a flag every ten feet and it would also allow flags to be put in front of the community center. And so on Veterans Day, citizens would ride through town and see the presentation of flags. Uh, I have a large group of volunteers who the Saturday before Veterans Day, if we could have use of the town home, we'd come in here and assemble all of these. And then on Wednesday or Wednesday after Veterans Day, we remove them. And I spoke to town manager about storage and that's something he said he'd work with us on. We'd rather not take the flags down because by the proper etiquette, we would have to fold all these flags in a triangle pattern and store them. And then we'd have to disassemble the poles. We prefer to store them as standing. And the other advantage would be, and Tom Manager mentioned this, would be like a memorial day. So behind the speakers, you could have a row of flags and you could more amplify the patriotism on the common. So again, this is something veterans and others are willing to do. This, I have to be clear, it's not the BFW. These are volunteer veterans. And they're all willing to jump in. I even have a gentleman sitting next to me this fall to help with them together. But right now, I have many, many people that are willing to partner us and they're, for the most part, they're doing it for the right reasons. So what I'm asking is, oh, I have one other thing. Tom Manager brought to my attention, we would need some type of lighting. Because I forgot that the common doesn't have the proper light. It has a few street lights, but that doesn't qualify. So we need some luminous luminary lighting, probably solar powered. So we need some luminous luminary lighting, probably solar powered that would keep the flags lit during night. You don't have to flood the flags, but you do have to have light on. Just envision one of these every two, ten feet around the common.
Right, like a little solar uplighting on it.
Yeah.
They they sell solar flagged uplights and they're very in it. Amazon is fabulous.
I I mean, I own this.
Yeah.
Three o'clock in the afternoon, he was at my house at ten in the morning.
Wow.
And it's twenty two dollars. I mean, with all respect, I was in retail sales my whole life. I respect retail sales, but it's hard to say no to a service like that. I provided the town manager with the uh ordering information and everything necessary. So the total cost will be twenty two times seventy five plus the lighting, whatever that would be.
I was gonna say with the twenty, if we go from a hundred to seventy five, with the twenty two hundred still.
I think it might be if if then I have to have at the next meeting because I'd be, if the board votes, I'm placing over.
Right.
Okay.
And and then anything that is not covered, I'm coming back just to have you amend your vote.
Yeah, like I said, I've seen, you know, the solar lights and the uplighting for the flags. I think they might attach to the pole when you sit.
I've seen them for the.
Yeah, the ground, I have the um just the grounds is gonna be everyone on the ground load flag.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the yard and then.
So do we want to just do the twenty two hundred?
Okay, yeah, we'll do the.
Okay, so I moved that the board vote to authorize the purchase of up to seventy five flags uh and lights for an amount not to exceed twenty two hundred dollars to be funded from the Ristin D Beautification Fund.
Thank you for doing that too.
No, thank you, the board, I mean.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, Frank.
Thank you.
Capacitiously unanimously, great idea.
Thank you.
And I got Kenny's living. You know.
That's. I I that was the, I have not heard Kenny's name in years, and if you brought him out of retirement, congratulations. Really?
He has been driving school class for the last ten years.
I love him.
And he loves him.
Good. Oh, of course they do. Well, kids like discipline. People forget that, that they like structure.
Yeah.
And they like discipline, and I am sure Mr. Libby.
Will enjoy looking.
Thank you, yes.
Very much so.
We appreciate everything. All right, so um review amendment, article amendments and approve final language.
Okay, so um we'll be able to then pull from the warrant, the the van included in your packet. Um it's a proposed article. Um Dennis was working with our paving contractor. We have our our existing paving contract is bound from June thirtieth. Um looking at how we word our article for supplemental chapter ninety funds. Uh it doesn't given us, it doesn't give us enough flexibility to do the work in the parking lot. So what we'd like to do is uh for one hundred thousand dollars, uh repave, resurface and reconfigure the parking lot. I don't have a a written quote to show you, it was supposed to be due today, but the contractor at Family Emergencies, he's gonna get it to us later on this week. Um understanding that especially for finance committee, we want to be able to have that written quote to base things off of. Uh but one of the benefits of doing it sort of this way is uh we'll be able to get it done before June thirtieth. It will fall under the existing pricing schedule. When we go back out July first with the new paving contract, those prices, of course, are going to. Uh so Dennis did apologize that we didn't have that. We had tried to get that for tonight's meeting. Um but we'll provide that uh to the board and finance committee later on this week. Uh and if if supported uh under the following item, then we would uh open the warrant, put this in. I basically proposed putting it in place of what we have the van under. Um and there are no other amendments uh to any of the other articles in um in the warrant. Only if we were gonna do other things with funding sources pulling them out. But this is the only thing that that would be a change besides from moving the van.
Questions, Brett, Maureen?
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
I moved that the board vote to approve the language for the article seeking funding for the resurfacing and reconfiguration of the town hall parking.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Are we having a party when the yellow things disappear, Mr. Brett?
I know we are, but I definitely am.
I couldn't resist, sorry.
I appreciate it. It's gonna be a party, we can take some pictures.
Do we need a before and after? Because we always forget the before. So um.
Did I hear the manager say to substitute that article thing?
Yes. That way, every other article continues to be.
Right.
Exactly, yes.
As is the.
The part of time.
We vote, the next is vote to open warrant, amend and or insert articles and to close the warrant.
So we won't have to worry, I mean, number two, we would, it would um uh we could skip over that and then insert uh proposed article uh as identified number three, and then we can close it.
Okay. I move that the board vote pursuant to Mass General law, chapter thirty nine, section ten, to reopen the warrant for the Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four special town meeting. And what do I do that? And then we do this one first, second, okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I move that the board vote to insert the article for the resurfacing and repaving of the town hall parking lot as presented and is maybe amended by town council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
I move that the board vote to immediately close said warrant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Thank you. Vote to execute the special town meeting warrant.
So I have the signature page downstairs as we head out, we'll just sign that. Everything else is staying the same except for that language will just be inserted as uh that replacement article nine.
During your motion?
Motion.
I moved that the board vote pursuant to Mass General law, chapter thirty nine, section ten, execute the special panel meeting warrant as amended for the Tuesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty four.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Um review and discuss document memorandum of agreement with elected boards.
Okay, so this is a implementation piece that came up during the presentation from the Town Managers Act Review Committee uh in a way to respond to uh some comments that were received by elected boards and or their staff on whether or not they supported uh recommendations to have staff of elected report directly or indirectly to the town manager as recommended um by the Town Manager Act Review Committee. So pulled together, um in my prior town, we had memorum agreements between select board and creation commission, planning board, uh the um uh Board of Health, uh sort of almost doing the same thing, basically saying, we're all gonna work together. We all recognize there are personnel policies, procedures that apply to the whole town that we all that we all follow. And um this then can be amended time to time so that if all sudden have some future date, um uh for example, if if staffing, if existing employees retire or leave, and we want to make a change, we can then amend this without having to worry about going to the active legislature to then get those departments. So it's not terribly long, um but it is different than what we've sort of done. So before, and I haven't sent this out to any of the elected boards yet because they want us to sort of see from the board what your reaction was, what your thoughts, is this worth pursuing? Uh because the other option is basically presenting the article as is um uh to town meeting and sort of seeing how it goes.
Um. I think where it's a large change, and this is me speaking as a member of the Board of Health. Um. I like the memorandum of agreement because it is easier. It's a living, breathing document versus something that's caught up by the legislature. Um but given that town meeting is less than a month away, um I don't know if we work with the boards and make sure everybody's happy and then address the town, the changes to the Town Managers Act at the annual, I don't know if that makes more sense. I don't want anyone saying we had two weeks to look at this and, you know, what are you doing to us? And we heard from library, I know Board of Health has had some concerns on um how the state law is written and how, you know, any changes may or may not affect that. Oh, I understand what we're doing, I get it. You, I've passed legislation before, you, it's almost impossible to change legislation, it's a huge act. Memorandum is easy, it's something that you can keep in house. I don't know how anyone feels about that. By the time we look at this and then draft it, we're 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 right up against, we're only a couple of weeks from town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I I I I don't think I feel too strongly one way or the other. What I do feel strongly about is that we, I think what's written in here from my perspective is fine, but I wasn't the one that had the concerns and thought that this shouldn't be written at all. So I was fine with the Town Manager Act changes, the way they were written the first time, opposed by the committee. We, they they did a great job, I think they did a thorough job and it was fantastic and clear to me. This was about the elected boards that wanted clarification. So I think that we need to take this and work with them to get their buy in. That ideally, we would work with them, get their buy in and have something that they at least say, okay, we understand that they can agree to disagree if they don't like it, but they can at least have a chance to speak about it. And if four weeks isn't enough time to do that because of the way their meetings are structured, then, you know, I don't, again, I don't feel too, too strongly about it. I'm a fan of checking things off the list and getting stuff done. If we can get stuff done, let's get it done. I think that everybody's expecting this on the warrant in the fall. But I also think that having this resolved ahead of that discussion is gonna make the discussion a hell of a lot easier.
I just don't want people standing up at town meeting, you know, what about, what about, what about?
That carries our thing to the other boards too, I see the MOA. And then if we have to push it off to town meeting, if everybody is agreeable and we can't get it done before special town.
If we can.
Perfect.
Right, we can, that's.
Right, so like send it to them and say, hey, this is coming up in four weeks, we know it's not a lot of time, can you take a look at this? We'd love to.
Yeah.
Figure it out before then, and if everybody's hair is on fire, then we we adjust if everybody says, oh, okay, we don't love it. So, yeah. The the thing, the thing I, the thing I, the thing I want to avoid is like kicking the can down the road and then still being in the same spot in the spring where, because we know we're not, there's a difference between agreeing, you know, understanding each other and agreeing. And I think that what we're gonna end up, what we have to acknowledge, and this is gonna be tricky, this is the needle you're gonna have to thread, is like, we know there are boards that are, there are parts of this Town Manager Act change that some elected boards understand but don't agree with. And so they're not gonna agree with it. There's not, there's no MOA that's gonna make them suddenly go, oh, yeah, great, now I'm full throated enthusiastically supportive of this change. They don't like the change, they don't want the change, they said they didn't want the change. So we're not miraculously gonna get them to be thrilled with it. And so what I don't want to do is think that by waiting till the spring, suddenly people are now gonna be super enthusiastic and feel great about it. There's still, there are people who don't like it, still aren't gonna like it, even if they agree with the MOA.
Agreed.
So that's.
Now we can't have a conversation.
I I just, you know, I want to toss about there that if people don't have time to have a conversation.
Oh, exactly. Oh, you at least need to have a conversation.
Yeah, because the boards need to get this, take a look at it, work on it because they can't, you can't send an email and go back and forth. You have to have meetings, or we violate the meeting law. So, looks for me.
I could, I, so I can sense it. Some of these boards may say, well, we'll not meet for another month. Okay, and kind of pull you up that way, say, no, we want you to have a meeting.
You have, I think the correct phraseology is, you have four weeks to have a meeting and come up with a decision.
To give us feedback.
Not even four weeks. We want three, four.
And and I don't even know that it's a decision as much as it is to review it and give us your feedback. I mean.
So if you don't want to be a part of it and you can't have a meeting, we call meetings when we have to have a meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, you ask, you respect my opinion, having been on the Town Manager Act. The first question I'd ask is, why is it that all other departments could force the Town Manager to should be exempted? Second is, if you do, uh there is one particular where you need to have voice come back from the elected department, not the employee. And that, we had that consistent. And the latter week up was the Town Manager shall, the Town Manager shall, Town shall, was basically very offensive. Um this is for the betterment of the town, it's not for personal agenda.
Yep, personally agree.
Agreed.
We agree. Like I said, speaking from Board of Health, there is a few things that because the Board of Health reports direct to the Mass Board, Mass Department of Public Health, there have been some concerns about what if they've, I bet what's language, what is the, what's, what's this gonna look like? And I'm like, look, we're, you know.
For the MOA you're talking about.
For the, for the MOA, they've asked, I said, we're gonna have to meet and, you know, what's it's, it's, we're looking, drafting and looking. I mean, I go both sides of the fence occasionally.
Also, the, excuse me, the question was asked, and it's the most profound answer I can give. The Board of Selectmen elected to relinquish all their authority for the good of the town, for better management. What was a stronger statement than that?
Exactly, I don't have a problem with, like I said, there is state law and there is case law on the Board of Health. The Board of Health is a little bit different animal. But we did something.
But I think, right, town attorneys have reviewed the proposed, that's why it has to go through the Attorney General and our own attorneys and all that. So I trust that those experts have and are aware of, have that understanding and aware of that and, you know, there's not anything in there that's gonna create conflict.
But that's where. Um. You know, I think one of the things is that this, this really doesn't have an impact on, say, the Board of Health per se, because the Board of Health is selected. They're the ones that are empowered by Mass General law to do certain things. They're also empowered to uh be able to um hire and um get the staff that's that's needed. There's a policy direction, this is where it's always spent. And um there's a policy direction, but then there's also day to day administrative. And that's where it's really an opportunity to work together, and that's where for this, um it basically reinforces that working together. Um I can easily forward these, this out and, you know, if the board would would like on the twenty ninth, we can ask that they attempt to have a discussion on on this item as far as being able, is this a viable mechanism? Because if all of a sudden it's like, no, we're not gonna do anything about it, then that's.
Nothing's gonna change, right, exactly.
Right.
But also, this is a good faith effort to address the concerns that they raised about wanting additional clarity. If they don't appreciate it, or this doesn't give them the clarity, or they just still say, we don't support it, then we'll just go to town meeting and let the people decide, because that's why you have a town meeting.
The other, the other side of it is, um and uh, correct me if I'm wrong, uh this does not go into effect until it passes the legislature.
Correct.
So even if town meeting passes.
You're a long way.
Year. And a year is good.
Yes.
So you're, you're a year and a half away from it's implemented. So there is time to work, work things, work things out.
Works for me. Then said, yep, now I'm lost. Do we need a motion to approve this, or we're just, it was?
No, that was.
Okay, so that's fun. That's what happens when it's on the computer, I, if I scroll down through, um discussion of future meetings and topics and schedules.
So um understanding, uh it seems very long ago when we sort of set up our fall schedule and. Understanding, August seems very long ago when we sort of set up our fall schedule and inviting Matthew in for an update on holy angels. Sort of passed through them by mind and focus primarily on town meeting. But did want to sort of be able to identify things that are coming up and also make sure that as we think about the, the fall going into winter, if there's things. Not on here that we make sure we can schedule and, and sort of have that opportunity to consider. For the next meeting, I do have the finance director coming in to give an update and to look at not only how FY 25, 24. Ended, but then also looking at 25. We just have to go over motions for meeting and talk about how we want our presentations. November. I'm sorry, it should be November 19th, not the 12th, because the 12th is town meeting. 19th will be the tax classification hearing and then we get into our annual license renewals. The board wanted to talk and, and really nail down scholarship changes and procedural changes. And then. Many of our policies that the board. Sort of lives by, town lives by. Want to start thinking about how can we revisit some of those? Update them to make them a little bit more. So we want to just have a general discussion about sort of going through things and distribute notebooks so that you have them all. So we can just gradually over the staff, the staff's perspective is maybe gradually over the year, just take a couple of policies at a meeting, go over it and then. Meeting, hit a couple more. Lisa Burnett had commented, spoke to the board about discussing traffic and littering on Mendon. She had something come up, so that was canceled. I haven't rescheduled it yet. We had identified a multi-board meeting and then also, uh, once we get into winter, uh, setting up a meeting with personnel to talk about employee benefits. It sort of continues the whole thing with retention and strategy, so. Good.
Ben, Jeff, yeah.
Yes.
You're talking, uh, having Kenny come in on October 29th to talk about this. That's the case, the fighting committee was trying to talk about this. So is there some way we can get the numbers from Kenny? So that we have access to it night before town meeting said, what are we gonna do with this? Because only three of us heard this presentation to which, as far as I'm concerned. 99.97 is a pretty cut and dry. I think there was unanimous on all but two, a couple, I would say. So. We need to know the number.
Yeah. Balance sheet was submitted for FY 20, was submitted over the weekend. It's been basically for, at least since I've been here, we've had it run within a week. So the hope was that. Week before the 29th, we're gonna have the numbers that people have it and then Kenny can talk about. Sort of a, where free cash ended up being, where we saw some of our bigger increases. And sort of lay things out so that the board and finance committee can sort of see these numbers in advance of just town meeting saying we have X. For free cash and, and understanding where it was generated, how it was generated and what resulted in that.
Well, my reason is twofold. First, I'd like to know what the free cash number is. Second of all, we need to know how much room there is to the levy. It could be a hundred and forty thousand dollars or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars again, that should be raised appropriately.
Yeah.
And, and I understand how the number, how the numbers work.
Yeah.
So we, we determine how much room there is in the lottery, but.
Yeah.
So we need to have that sooner rather than later.
Yes.
All right.
And agree with that.
All right. So we'll postpone the meeting for. Second week, the third weekend on October or something like that.
That would be the fourth.
What's with you?
Yeah. Sorry, fifth. Because, yeah. Fortune ended up having five Tuesdays at that month.
Oh, wonderful.
Okay, so the meeting minutes, did everyone have a chance to read them?
Yep.
I had a couple of very minor changes. On, I did, it's not that, on page four. Residency racked him, mentioned a survey that was done. It was done in 2019, so I just added the words 2019. I corrected the spelling of Lynn Hagerty's name and line 141, it said it did not pass, but it was actually tabled. So I would recommend those three minor changes.
I'm a fan.
And if everyone else is in agreement, I'll hand my chicken scratch to Sue and we're good to go. Do I hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes as amended by Laura for October 1st, 2024.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Excellent job, sir. And do I hear a motion to? End the meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
756 adjourned, unanimous.